I call to order the first school board meeting of 2020. And Angela, please take a look.
Yes.
Ashley or Ashley?
Joe Aldrich.
Here.
Paul Christensen.
Here.
Angela Tucker.
Here.
Judy Thompson.
Here.
Chrissy Peterson.
Here.
Matt McKean.
Here.
And please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No, it's pretty hard. It's still pretty hectic.
We're going to do the school board member oath of office and I'll read a statement here. And then at the end, we'll have you, have the board members recite it all. It is an honor that you were elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and the other members of our school board in the position of being both morally and legally responsible for equitable, quality education of every student in our district. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board with extensive participation of the community envisions the community's educational future and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for the public schools. To achieve the vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, we must be accountable to the community. We must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, we serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision for our schools. Furthermore, we must strive to work together with district leadership and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. With that in mind, please stand. And we will now recite the oath of office and then sign the declaration.
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member of independent school district number 720 to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you.
I believe I do. Individually, sign it.
Yeah, or if you'd like, it's your own personal souvenir to put up and remind you of the awesome responsibility you have on behalf of our community.
I suppose we got video evidence, don't they?
They do.
We will move on to number five of our agenda for tonight. We are Shockley School's good news item. We got a lot of good looking people here to celebrate. So welcome. I've got a little bit that I'm going to recite here, but I have some things I'm going to add to. Tonight we approve, tonight we have the opportunity to approve the course proposals and registration guide for 2020 to 21. We want to take a moment to recognize a group of teachers who have continuously been involved in the redesign of our elective courses, grade six through 12, to align with the academy model. And they've been working for the past six years. They represent a much larger group of middle school and high school teachers, many of who served two to five years. This work would not be possible without the help and support of our teachers coming to meetings, doing curriculum writing, and many of who are willing to get additional training to teach a new course. These teachers stayed in this process for the entire six years of work. It is our final year meeting on a regular basis with all academy teams, so we want to recognize them for their time, leadership, and contribution to this important work. And I want to say I read both of the registration guides, cover to cover. They are a work of art. They are so well done. When I read that, I just felt so proud of what you are all accomplishing on a regular basis. And there were a lot of courses I wanted to take, but I won't be doing that, so don't have to worry about that. But I would like to turn over to Nancy Tool, Director of Teaching and Learning, who I have a few words to share too.
So what we'll do is just call each of you up individually and I'll just make a remark or two for each one. Don't panic. But I'd like you to stay because I know Ashley would tell me to have them stay so that you can get a picture at the end. I do just want to say, and really Judy mentioned it all, is that it's been really amazing journey. To think that any number of staff could have stayed with the whole process over six years, at least in part of my career. I've done a number of large scale adoptions in that three to five years range, but nothing of this magnitude in this amount of time. And that we would have about 16 staff that stayed with us through the whole process is really pretty amazing. And I just want to echo what was said earlier, which is, and I hope that, I want to make sure Ashley gets this in the notes, that when Allison and I did, went through all the records, and let's just be honest, it was more Allison than me. But when we went through the records of attendance and who was all at the meetings, the large number of teachers that were in that two to five range was pretty astounding as well. And so it's just, it's really been a special process for us. And so I want to individually recognize all of you. I also want to mention some of our TNL folks that helped facilitate that. Two of them are no longer with us. Ed Cox, at the beginning of that process. You guys know because you lived with us for so many years. Ryan Kermenga and now currently Zach Ives. Okay, so, starting with Tom Odvinson. Come on up. So, Tom is in arts and communication and has been instrumental in the development of the program of study around theater and live production. Todd Anderson. You're going to stay up here. So Todd helped us with all of the restructuring of engineering and manufacturing, but my favorite thing about Todd is that he was always our voice of reason for keeping us straight. And I know people would laugh when I say that. Heather Bomback. Heather is in our business and entrepreneurship. Heather, as well as other fax teachers, have been part of redesigning our culinary arts program to be a national program called ProStar. Andy Brown. Andy is in arts and communication. Quite frankly, if I looked at the records between Andy and Elizabeth Dear, I think we'd find that they served on the most committees through the whole academy process because he was on many committees, even outside of articulation. He's done a lot of work around the mass communications program of study. Elizabeth Dear. Elizabeth now serves as our academy coach, but was very involved in the health sciences. And whether she likes it or now, she likes it or not, she now attends most of the academy meetings to help with the advanced courses. Diane Ewing. Diane is in our business and entrepreneurship. We did a lot of revising and reworking, right Diane, of almost every business course? And Diane has been at the center of each of those revisions, so thank you. Sarah Gelferson. Sarah is in human services. Has been instrumental with all of the human services, but especially with Shawna, the teacher one, and especially the intro like human development and some of that kind of programming. TJ Hindrickson. TJ again helped with all the work within engineering and manufacturing and actually in other areas too, including helping to get some things off the ground at the middle level like medical detectives and some of the other practically away courses. Martin Lowen. Martin is in science and technology and has been instrumental in the development of our program of study for computer sciences, which didn't exist before. Rachel Paulson. Rachel was in arts and communication, was a lead on developing our digital design program, as well as her and Elizabeth were our first CAPS teachers. Jen Tabios. Jen joined human services as an A here too. And she stuck with us the whole time. She helped along with our industry council with multiple programs of study, and especially law and legal and some of the ones we're doing around mental health services. Lisa Walker. Lisa is part of health sciences, has taken over the CNA program from Elizabeth and was really instrumental with Matt Iverson, Andy Godler, and others around health sciences. I know Shawna is supposed to have a certificate. I can't find it. So I just want to say stay there as far as, because this might be the reason. Shawna might win the award for have been, for have been on all, like three different academy teams.
Just not at one point.
Yeah, so in the beginning, as you guys all recall, we were still figuring out where things were going to go, right? So some of you pivoted to other teams as we figured that out. I think Shawna pivoted the most. And she's been instrumental in both the culinary arts program as well as in our teacher education program along with Sarah. And I don't know. You'll get you a certificate.
Actually, she changed her name through all this.
I did. All right. So now they're going to want us to kind of get together and take a picture.
Mash, they can look at you.
2012.
There we go.
Oh.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Once more with the flash. One, two, three. Nice.
Feel free to stay through the whole meeting.
Thank you so much for the invite.
We do have some of the board on that they might be interested in. The stampede out.
So, number six. Consideration of agenda as presented. I need a motion to that.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor, we don't have to discuss. Do we have to discuss? Discussion? No, in that case, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion passes. And we move on to seven, new business, which is the election of officers for this next year. And I will entertain a motion for consideration to elect the office of chairperson.
I would nominate Christie Peterson.
I have Christie Peterson as nomination. Do I hear any other nominations? Are there any further nominations for office of chair? If there are no further nominations.
You have to say it three times for officers.
Didn't I say that three? Okay, I'll say it once more. Are there any further nominations for the office of chair? In that case, if there are no further nominations, nomination for Christie Peterson as the office, the chair, the office of chairperson are closed. And I have the opportunity, the acting chair, it's my opportunity to accept Christie Peterson as the next chair of the school board, and I declare her elected by acclamation. And at this point, I direct her to take over.
Yep. Now we get our musical chairs. Need to go over there. We don't care what ours.
Yes, you learned some of that. Yeah, I think we'll be okay when we leave. We'll tie on each other's clothes.
Okay, next item on our agenda for election of board officers is consideration to elect the office of vice chairperson. Okay, we have a nomination for Judy Thompson. Are there other nominations for vice chair? Are there other nominations for vice chair? Any other nominations for vice chair? All right, hearing none, the nominations are closed.
It said no.
You don't have, if there's no other nominations, you can declare the by acclamation.
By acclamation, then I declare that Judy Thompson is vice chair of the school board.
Hope you don't get too comfortable on that.
I don't have to, or I could, but do I need to?
Maybe we wait for the rest of the officers.
Let's just wait and then you see it all in the comments.
So the next item is consideration to elect office of treasurer. Do we have nominations for the office of treasurer? I'd like to nominate Joe Aldrich. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations for treasurer? Last time, any other nominations for treasurer? Hearing none, we will close the nominations for treasurer. And by acclamation, we'll appoint Joe Aldrich to the position of treasurer. Congratulations, Joe. And the last position, consideration to elect the office of clerk.
I'd like to nominate Paul Christensen.
Any nominations for clerk? Any other nominations for the position of clerk? Any other nominations for the office of clerk? Hearing none, I will close the nominations for clerk. And by acclamation, I will appoint Paul Christensen as our clerk for the upcoming school year. Paul? You want your water? I'm going to get my purse. All right, moving on. Item 7.2 is consideration to adopt compensation amounts for the members of the board for 2020.
I would like to make a motion that we keep the second.
The 4,500 for everyone and then an extra 500 for the chair, vice chair, correct?
Correct, correct.
Paul second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of keeping the compensation as is for 2020? Say aye.
Aye.
Always. Okay, motion passes.
That was beautiful.
Joe, Paul on the motion and?
Paul made the motion, Matt McKean made the second.
Okay, just want to make sure we keep the correct.
Pass 6-0. Got to show your job. All right, good. All right. Thought I was doing it a little bit too, but I'm not very good at it.
Item 7.3 is a consideration to approve the clerk, treasurer, and chair as signers on checks issued by the school district.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Judy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
This next one, I think we have to vote against. So manual signatures on every page, right?
No.
Now it's a no. 7.4 is a consideration to approve the use of facsimile signatures by the clerk, treasurer, and chair as one signing checks issued by the school district.
I'll take that motion.
I'll second.
Second by Angela. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 7.5, consideration to approve the designation of official depositories for the school district funds, the Old National Bank, Hometown Bank, Minnesota School District Liquid Asset Fund Plus, Men Trust via PMA, Associated Bank, US Bank, Wells Fargo, and BMO Harris.
I so moved.
Second.
Judy?
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 7.6 is a consideration to approve the designation of the director of finance and operation or designee to deposit and/or invest surplus funds.
So moved. Second.
Angela? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
7.7 is a consideration to approve the director of finance and operations or designee to make electronic fund transfers on behalf of the school district.
So moved.
Second.
Paul, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 7.8, consideration to approve the authorization of the superintendent or designee as having the authority after informing the school board as to such actions to enter contracts and approve payments on behalf of the school district.
So moved.
Second.
Joe, any matter? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 7.9, consideration to approve the designation of the Shockley Valley News as the official newspaper of the school district.
So moved.
Paul?
Second.
Judy, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consideration to approve the designation of the windows near the front doors of the district office at 1200 Town Square as the official posting place for regular and special meeting notices.
So moved.
Second.
Joe? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 7.11 is the consideration to approve the designation of Ratwick, Wazak, and Maloney as a school attorney. School board chair and superintendent or designees are the persons authorized to contact an attorney on behalf of the school district.
So moved.
Yeah?
Second.
Joe? Any further discussion?
Yeah, just real quickly, this is a change, and I just wanted to thank Peter Martin, who has been our attorney on several matters throughout the years. With KFD, he did wonderful work for our district. But it's time to move on to a new firm, but I just wanted to recognize Peter for all his long service started.
And if I may add, we'll still potentially use other firms and we'll certainly use Knut's and Flynn &amp; Dean's for tasks that they're currently involved in. But just that, yeah, it's, you know, a number of the business things we do, we shift from place to place, from time to time. Develop new relationships, build new services, and kind of just keep up to date.
Okay, any further discussion, the dominance? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 7.12 is a consideration to approve the designation of Superintendent Mike Redmond as the identified official with authority for the MDE External User Access Recertification System. The Minnesota Department of Education requires that school districts annually designate an identified official with authority to comply with the MNIT Enterprise Identity and Access Management standard, which states that all user access rights to Minnesota State systems must be reviewed and recertified at least annually. The identified official with authority will assign job duties and authorize external users' access to MDE secure systems for their local education agency. The board recommends to authorize Mike Redmond to act as the identified official with authority for Shockley Public School District 0720. I so moved.
Second.
Judy, men? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 7.13, consideration to approve the designation of the superintendent's administrative assistant as the education identity and access management security manager. The EDIAM security system manages user accounts and authorizes to secure website systems for the Minnesota Department of Education, Professional Educator Licensing and Standards Board, and P20W. So moved.
Second.
Joe? Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 7.14, consideration to adopt the online school district policy library.
So moved.
Second.
Judy? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? On 715, consideration to approve the automatic rescheduling of a school board work session or regular meeting that is postponed on short notice due to weather or other serious event from Monday at 6:00 to two days later on Wednesday at 6:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Matt and Paul?
If I might say something on that. Yeah, typically if a meeting is canceled on short notice for spare weather or something, you have to give 72 hours to reschedule it. Wednesday night is typically the night that works best for a quick rescheduling, so this allows us to do it in a little bit shorter time window with that preapproval. Everybody knows that. Hey, Monday meetings canceled because there was a blizzard, we're going to hold it on Wednesday, so.
And that's a nice, I mean, I think you brought that last year, right? So somewhere second year having that. It's a great plan because when we've had to reschedule meetings for core issues or something like that, it gets to be a nightmare and you wind up with our favorite 6:00 AM on Thursday morning meetings. That's not been very accessible to the public, so I think this is a great transparency.
And just for everyone's information, should this occur, I will be the one asking. So when is it scheduled for again?
Yep, no problem.
Who postpones it? Is it Christie, the chair, or would it be either one?
I think we'd work together. Sometimes it might be the district is closed and we're not holding any meetings. But we would certainly, you know, just like we do for other events at the evening, we're going to be good and the day wasn't, we might still hold. Even if school were canceled.
Good enough.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? On 716, consideration to approve a mileage reimbursement rate for 2020. Mileage rate to set at IRS 2020 rate, which is .575, or 57 and a half cents per mile.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those.
Who gave the second back?
Judy.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 717, consideration to approve committee appointments for 2020. So I think with this one, what makes most sense is to have a discussion about the committee appointments for 2020 after we appoint somebody to our board. To me, that makes the most sense. We can still, I think, same process as last year. We can still, we can still, I think, same process as last year, when you sent out the email, what are your preferences, because obviously we need to reshuffle the deck a little bit with committee assignments, we have an absentee, we'll have a new person's next month, and then also to just kind of balance out the committees as well amongst everybody.
Makes sense to me.
So I will send out an email with kind of the same sheet as what we had last year, and we can have further discussion maybe quickly about it, the retreat on Saturday, if there are questions or concerns.
I don't think it's going to put whoever you appoint on every committee and every lay is on assignment.
I would approve that.
So can we just postpone that?
I think we can postpone it. Do I hear we're going to do that at February 10th, when the new Board member is official? We'll set the committees then?
I wonder if it would be possible for whoever, whomever is appointed to let us know their interests, then we can, we can all...
We can leave a placeholder until they're officially seated.
Even though they're not officially on the Board.
So make that public on January, what would be 27th, 28th? There's the committee list, and, yeah, certainly, we can do that. I was just trying to clarify which of those dates.
Is everyone okay with that? All right, 718, consideration to approve the 2020 School Board calendar, meeting calendar. I think the copy was handed out before the meeting tonight. Looks like it is pretty much the same, same rotation as far as dates go. For the most part, it looks very similar to previous year.
Yeah.
And it looks like we've been given something suggesting that it is going to be, and it's basically the same.
Yes.
I feel like I looked at it before.
It's November 9th, is that something's there?
Veteran's Day is always a community event.
Is it?
I believe so. I think they changed that a while ago.
Okay. It was known in the past we had to have a special motion to be able to have a meeting or move the meetings.
Now, that being said, October 12th is Columbus Day.
What's our next item on the agenda?
Well, I didn't want to get ahead of the stuff.
Which maybe we should, yeah, technically have done.
Spoilers in order.
Sorry, spoiler alert, yeah.
And just know that some of these committee meetings, while these are on the calendar, they may, they might move a little bit based on happenings that committee may need to meet earlier, or that they may be pushed, so there's some flexibility that way. All right. Motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Joe? Any further discussion? I think one thing also to note on here, that July 11th would be our summer Board Retreat.
We can...
You can talk about that.
Yeah.
That's an excuse for me not to do a tough move of work, so.
Any further discussion?
Joe, do you have any other events you want to get over?
Oh, I thought we were talking about...
Yeah, so we'll approve it as it is, but it may change as, that's what I guess.
Right. Speaking of the one in January.
Which is on Saturday?
Yeah.
Okay. We can talk about that at the end.
Yep. Just wanted to clarify that with you.
All those in favor of approving the 2020 School Board Calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Post. And the last item, there are reorganization part of our meeting, is the consideration to allow the Board and other school district meetings to be held on Columbus Day. So moved.
Second.
Joe? Joe, would you have any discussion on Columbus Day?
That still exists.
A little bit so made of American Day, or Indigenous Day.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post.
What was that for?
All right, we are reorganized. Okay, we are moving to, let's see, we already talked about consent, correct? So we are moving now to item nine.
I think we are now the one that would approve.
Are you still, oh, I thought we already did that?
No.
No, that was the agenda.
Oh, that was the agenda, okay, got it. All right, consent items.
I'll make a motion to approve consent.
All right.
I'll second.
Any discussion on any of the consent items? I think the only thing that I had noted was on 83, the middle and high school course books, you already made note of that, and how well they went on, it was phenomenal, it was like I was going to go to college.
It was beautiful.
It was very well done, so.
The kids today at Shakopee are really fortunate. I think though, that, you know, some of those opportunities that they have, and the way one thing leads to the next, and it's so impressive.
Any further discussion on that? Anything else on the consent? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. All right, now we move to nine. 9.1, which is the selection for appointment to the Shakopee Board of Education. So before we get into this discussion, just for those that may be watching at home, you know, we went through a process way back in October already where we decided to open up an application window for community members to apply if they were interested in possibly being, serving the last year of Reggie Bowerman's term. On December 9th, the Board selected three finalists. We had eight total applicants for the position, and on the 16th of December, we held a special meeting to interview all three candidates, and that leads us to tonight, and the discussion of the selection of the Board member. Just to reiterate, there is a 30-day waiting period, and so whoever is selected this evening would have a 30-day waiting period, and would have a February 10th appointment at that Board meeting.
Can you speak on what the 30-day period's for in the petitioning, just so we make sure the public's aware of it, if there is a...
Yeah, the 30-day period is just a statutory obligation. If anybody disagreed with that action of the Board, they had an opportunity to protest or petition that, and there is a process for doing so.
So I guess I'll start discussion by saying that of, you know, eight applicants, I thought we had some very, very good applicants from the community, appreciate everyone's interest. We narrowed it down to three very good candidates, I felt. They were all very qualified, and for myself, I'm having a very hard time trying to decide between a couple of the candidates. I think that if we could have a couple of the candidates serve on the Board, we could take two, I would make that recommendation, but I don't, we can't, so.
But we would encourage them to maybe run from this.
That's right.
Because there are so many good candidates.
I think we want to encourage everybody who applied, whether they're one of the three finalists or not, and just to remind everybody, the Board, we went down to three blindly, we don't know who the other five options are, I believe Mike and Sarah contacted and thanked them for applying. But we would be very interested in seeing anybody who's expressed interest in filing for the ballot, there's a $2 filing fee that's pretty prohibitive, but that will, that'll be in July, August.
File in August, yeah.
So with that, Matt, you want to start with the...
Yeah, just a kind of high-level run-through, we had the three finalists. We had Tamara came in and has a great background as a special ed teacher, and has a great academic credentials, and is really connected with the kids, and really brought a lot of, I think, the hands-on experience being a teacher in another district, that was very, very strong, very positive attributes. Then we had Jeff Smith, who applied, who has a great background in the corporate world, military, in volunteerism, a lot of community service, and brought a well-rounded, his answers were, in my opinion, very well-rounded and reasonable, demonstrating a logical thought process. And then our third finalist was Tim Brophy, who we got to see, was it that same Board meeting? When he, not the interviews, but where he presented with Citizens Facilities Task Force, who also is another logical thinker, who has a lot of community service. So three, three strong candidates, and I don't think we're going to go wrong. I think I feel strongly that there's two who are pretty qualified, exceptionally qualified in my case, or in their cases, I shouldn't say. So I think, yes, it's going to be an interesting conversation. To me, Tim and Jeff were very, very strong, and well positioned to be an asset to the Board, in my opinion. Just from a process standpoint, does anyone have other opinion as to the top two or otherwise? Or it's always hard in a three-person conversation, it's...
I know that there were two that I liked better than one of them, and out of those two, it was a close horse race, and very difficult to make a decision on it. But, you know, after just blindly weighing pros and cons of each, I would say we narrow it down to one.
Yeah, I rewatched the video and was impressed with the two that I was choosing between, and it was good to have three weeks to really think about it, because I gave it a lot of thought.
Yeah, and, you know...
And who I'm going to vote for, maybe in a couple of days, if I think about it more, I might switch my vote, because I think that the two that I am considering, or I was considering, very even. I think whichever one is elected tonight, whichever one of the three, I think we will be, they'll add it to the Board.
Yeah, you don't get to change your answer in two days.
I get that, no, I get that, just like every election.
Yeah, and, you know, my number two, please don't take this as a slight, or the number three.
I would agree, maybe more. All three would be an asset to the Board, I think the top two would be exemplary assets to the Board.
I agree with you. Having worked with Tim on the Facilities Task Force, I noticed that he had a real knack for, everybody has different ideas, and all these ideas are milling around, and he was able to, excuse me, I'm getting this through here, he was able to kind of bring them together and have it make sense, all those different ideas, and then we could move on, and wow, I think that's a big skill, that's a tough thing to do, and he seemed to be an expert at that, so I would say that he would be probably my top candidate, just for how I saw him operate on that Facilities Task Force.
As much as it pained me to put a poll better in second, I also agree with what Judy said, I, you know, I just looked at things blindly, and, you know, had to do it that way. Between one and two, I could not make a decision knowing, you know, knowing who I was looking at, but once I looked at it blindly.
You know, point, it's kind of like the scenarios we had for the middle school, they're both great. Either one of those scenarios that we had, it was a win-win, and I think whichever one between, whichever one we pick is going to add to the Board. I'm happy with the candidates that we have.
Yeah, I'm in the same Board, and I'm in the same Board as Judy and Paul. Well, I think Jeff would be a tremendous asset, I think Tim had just a little, possibly because I was able to see him in all those Facility Task Force meetings, and then just the way he would bring the room to consensus, even amongst diverse opinion, often differing opinions, it was, well, what about the, yeah, okay, it was just, it was tremendous, but they both have just this tremendous ability to process all of the variables that we all have to face, because as we've all learned as Board members, you get pulled in eight different ways, and then you make a move here, it changes this. So, yeah, so I would vote for Tim myself. So I guess I'll make a motion if it sounds like that, with respect to the other two candidates, I'd like to nominate Tim Brophy for Board seat.
Second.
Matt and Paul, is there further discussion?
Tim was my first choice.
And I, again, I've been going back and forth, and over those three weeks, I, like I said, if we could have both of them, that would be my choice, but that's not the way it works.
Reggie couldn't resign twice.
So we have a motion by Matt and a second by Paul to select Tim Brophy to the open Board seat on the Shakopee Board of Education. Any further discussion before we vote?
I think we can just, yeah, so it's...
So we will do a roll call vote?
Do we have to do the first and last name, or can we just do first name? Joe?
Tim Brophy.
So yes on the motion?
Yes.
On the motion.
On the motion, yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes. And I believe that Christie and Mike could step out and call to make sure that there's an acceptance, because otherwise, we want to move on to number two, if for some reason there's not. I can, Sarah's got it, Sarah, it's all for.
And of course, I forgot my shit, I'm going to have to bring it.
Well, thanks.
I forgot my shit.
All right.
We'll recess for 10 minutes.
Okay. All right, so Mike is going to step out. And read the call. We're going to take a pause while we wait for Mike and Matt to come back in before we move on to our new business item, number 10. So we will take a two- to five-minute break while we wait for them to come back into the room. So we will come back when you do that.
I'll make a note of it for Sarah.
Can we just turn them off so they don't lose the chance to lose them?
I, of course, forgot mine, trying to rush out.
I'll come on Saturday.
Oh, yeah.
Is there anybody else? Keith, do you want to take these, it's Sarah's assignments?
I can take them.
Just leave these for them.
The questions?
So you're, I don't need a break?
You need to, everything that...
Oh, I'm sorry, that's what I mean, I don't have mine here.
Okay.
I never thought about that.
I thought about it last second as I was backing out of driveway, pulled back in.
I was more worried about getting my stuff. I said, no, it's 10 after 8:00, gotta go. And I didn't think about getting this.
Sorry, Mike's calling right now. Do you want to step out?
We didn't think we should go on until you were back, so.
All right, so Mike said we could go in and... Alright, so Mike said we could go ahead and move on, just to do 10-1 while we are waiting for him to come back. So, actually, do you want to make notes? Under new business item 10.1, consideration to approve MSBA local control resolution. So basically, what this is, school districts across the state of Minnesota are basically passing a resolution that will be passed on then to state legislature. Reinforcing the fact that districts want to maintain control over making decisions about education in our district. And that we are not okay with turning it over to the state to tell us what to do for our students. So basically, that's what this resolution is, it's attached in your board book. But I will just read the last part of it. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Independent District 720 Shakopee Public Schools supports local decision-making authority and opposes legislation that restricts the ability for local elected school boards to respond to the needs of their district's students and communities. So again, this is just support, along with many other school districts in the state, to maintain our decision-making authority.
And I missed it at the intro, did you say this was part of the delegate assembly you participated in?
This was not part of the delegate assembly, but it was something that was discussed.
Okay.
And encouraged school districts across the state to pass this resolution to show support of maintaining that local authority, control of decision-making.
And I would assume since Minnesota School Board is recommending that, they must feel that the state legislature currently is playing the best and loose ball concept.
We're independent district, not, let's keep the independent in there.
Yeah, and I mean, the bulk of our funding and everything comes from the state.
Right.
And they are an elected body, right, so, but it's good to have locally elected local officials making as many decisions as possible. Obviously, the state has to provide consistency and standards and all of those things. But more decisions can be made by the stakeholders in the community, the better, in my opinion. So I strongly support this.
Yeah, I mean, it's, not the Minnesota School District, it's Shakopee School District.
Do you have any comments that you'd like to make in regards to this?
I missed most of the discussion, but it sounds like, I mean, that is the gist of it. Minnesota School Board Association, I think they feel that it helps them to show kind of unity across the district and all the public school districts, saying, hey, we recognize the independent part of the nature of the public school boards in our state, and that that's an important responsibility. And once in a while, I think, yeah, they will use that as a reminder and use that as a little bit of leverage in the state legislature. Especially when it comes to, you know, things like unfunded mandates and some of those things, where every once in a while, that some of the things that come legislatively, I think the School Board Association would argue, rightfully so, that they're too prescriptive and, you know, don't allow for enough kind of local control and local voice. So, yeah, I would echo the sentiment that I was hearing when I returned.
So then I need a motion to?
Motion.
Paul?
Say it.
Matt? Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion passes. Back to nine-one, we're able to reach Tim?
Yeah, I was able to reach Tim, and he said he would be honored to serve on the board, and was very, very appreciative of the opportunity and appreciative of the process and the opportunity to be a part of that. And certainly looking forward to joining the school board, so.
Great.
His answer was yes.
And again, a thank you to those not selected, and I hope stay engaged and stay involved and file for election this summer. Strong candidates.
And if I might say something on that point, too. It's, in any of these processes, and I made a little note, you know, we had eight folks stick their necks out and become a part of this. And when you have a process of eight, and you're going to select one, there are seven that you're going to say no. And I would say that it's really a no, not at this time, but it is, you know, with true appreciation and thankfulness for your willingness to serve, that that's important. You know, when we have bodies such as the school board and other committees and things in our school district, the fact that we've got good people willing to step forward and provide that level of service is really a great thing. And so, hopefully, what comes out of it is our appreciation for your willingness to serve, and let's keep that door open. And there are other ways to serve, and there'll be, you know, more in the future, too. And we would certainly welcome you and want you to be a part of, you know, the things we do in our school community, so.
Absolutely.
Okay. Under new business 10.2, consideration to approve the July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2021 Shakopee Education Association teacher contract. Keith, do you want to come and present?
Yep, here Dale. And if the guy who can determine NFL royalties could come up as well. Can't tell which team you're, I like it.
There's also agreement on that, favorite team. We have consensus there.
So you're gonna read the whole contract right there?
Give it to him somewhere.
Yeah, the summary.
So, pretty brief summary, but these were sort of the highlights of our agreement. We came to an agreement on these two big issues, which were salary schedule and health insurance. And so with salary schedule, we agreed to a 1% increase in year one and a 3.25% increase to salary schedule, both of those years. And then on health insurance, a 10% increase to district contribution in year one and an 8% increase to district contribution in year two. And there's various ways to do calculations, they report, but I think most school districts today are reporting the method called the MSBA method, which is, for us, is 6.9 to 8% MSBA calculation. That's our, that was the highlight, I think, of our, there are many other things we talked about and we agreed to, but these were the, obviously, the two big ones. And the cost items associated with the contract.
I would, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go, I mean, other than that, I would say is, I have been here through two rounds, and it's always been professional and well-thought, great conversations, getting to understand both parties, so.
I would just like to say it was an interesting ride, to say the least. And I know there were times when Dale, I'm sure your side was beating the head, there felt like you were beating your heads against the wall. And there were times, same time for, you know, similar times for us. But I'm glad we were able to come up with something, I know it's slightly over what we were authorized by the rest of the board, but we did our level best to keep as close to that as possible.
Yeah, it's always that fine line of, we are under our fund balance policy, right? But we also want to take care of, to the degree possible, our teachers who are in the classroom, right, who are doing the teaching. And so critically important, and, you know, we want to retain as many teachers as possible. So it's important that we are able to arrive at a point that's mutually agreeable. And I just also, as Keith talked, it's, you know, this is not my fourth cycle going through this. I've never been part of negotiations elsewhere, I know Keith has, I know Mike has, but it's fantastic to work with a union that keeps everything centered on what's best for students. And what's best for the long-term health and welfare of the district, we're all in this together. I think that starts with Dale and the team, the negotiations team. It's great to have that, we don't, you know, some other districts have different models, interest-based bargaining works very well, I know we went through group training on that. So I just want to thank you for that. And as Paul said, it's, they're always interesting rides, there's always roller coasters. But it's, you know, it's great to work in a spirit partnership. So thank you to you and your entire union, but most of all, the negotiations staff, for the time and effort.
But, just to say thank, we would also say thank you for, I mean, it's a long process, especially when you're in times that are a little more challenging like this, where you're trying to figure out how do we navigate when there are financial concerns? And trying to balance the interests of, like you're talking about, teacher retention, and at the same time not put the district in such a chokehold that they can't, you know, continue to do the good things that they need to do for students. And so, we're very appreciative for, in spite of the fact that it takes a while sometimes to get there, very appreciative of the board's efforts, you know, to do the willingness to kind of walk through that process. You know, in the end, if everybody is not completely satisfied, but yet at the same time, you know, I think both sides can walk away from this, I feel like we're moving in the right direction.
Just one question for you, was the fact that the settlement came on at the meeting, that I wasn't there, was that coincidental, like I had a work emergency? Or was that the tipping point? Hit me on the roof.
I think they saw the opportunity, and I had to leave early.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, and they said, okay, he's not here either, so.
Neither confirm nor deny.
No, in all seriousness, it's, you know, the board has very, we were obviously involved, but, you know, Keith and Mike and Jeff Priest was involved for the district side, and Natasha was involved pretty actively as well, with the Keith staff. And then, again, the whole, the whole teacher staff was.
It's a good group.
Yeah, I think everyone on the board, at least maybe except for Judy, appreciates it.
Maybe I do want to be on that committee. I'm assuming it is retroactive.
Yes.
How does it work for that retroactive piece with the health? And you can't go back and redo that.
It's complicated, you have, I mean, there's a lot of different kind of calculations you have to make to get that. What we try to figure out is what if people pay to date, what's left to pay, that's probably the most simplest, simplest conversation there. And then try to, you know, calculate that out for everybody, and then they would be paying different amounts, moving forward. There's a reason why it takes a little while.
Yes.
Yeah, it's not.
Well, then we added another degree of complexity with the shift to a new finance system on January 1st, Skyworks, so.
Yeah, yeah, that was definitely.
We just wanted to test the HR and finance teams and see what kind of stuff they were made of.
So far, they're doing great. So far, we passed, so.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve the settlement as it's outlined, but also, I'm good.
July Matt, second by Paul, any further discussion? Because I'll just say.
Thank you for you three.
Contribute much of our discussion, but just thank you to everybody that was involved in coming together and willingness to collaborate and come to a solution. We know that it probably wasn't the easiest thing to do, we want to keep our teachers, we've got some fabulous teachers in our district. And hopefully, this is just the start of continuing that positive working relationship that we have in the district. Alright. All in favor of approving the teacher contract through 2021, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Thank you again, everybody.
Till next time.
Don't say that, that starts about nine months.
It only feels that way.
Item number 11 is other, do you have any other other that you need to discuss today?
I do run a order, the retreat.
Okay, do you want to talk, let's talk about that now.
Maybe discuss, if everyone's okay with pushing it back.
I know, I'm traveling now after.
Okay.
So I've got business trips planned, and I know I.
I, something that came up is not that important. Okay?
I will be gone the next couple of weeks, after that.
Yeah, I've got conflicts the next two Saturdays, and then for break, it's a lot of travel as well, so.
Okay.
If that works, I hate to put it out, but.
Yeah, it's not a huge deal, Matt. I may leave early.
Would a time change help, Paul, to go, to begin at eight instead of nine?
That would be awesome. Four, five, instead of.
It's a Saturday.
But it's.
That's where I was driving.
I'll be up, doesn't matter.
I'm going to wake by five.
He said four.
Yeah, I probably wouldn't be in bed yet at four o'clock, so I might get a little down.
So I'll be okay with moving the time then to eight instead of nine? Seven-one okay with that, and then you would finish at one?
Yep, I'll make that motion.
Yeah, please.
And Angie's kind of making a pouty face here.
I'm sorry, Angie.
I really did.
No, I don't.
Alright, Matt.
As long as we're done by 3:30, I'm fine.
Matt made a motion to change the time of our retreat on Saturday to 8:00 AM instead of nine. Is there a second?
Second.
Joe? All in favor, say aye. Pose.
They could, it wasn't unanimous.
So 8:00 AM. Item number 12 is committee reports, I'm not sure if we've had any committee meetings over the holidays, but Matt, you want to start?
Uh, we just did the personnel committee, so we covered it.
I'm good. Have that happened?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Congratulations to my son's hockey team, took third, new home.
Dave?
Just kind of an update on what we're doing with the, actually, feel free to jump in here, the middle school attendance areas. We're working on a communication out to every middle school family, incoming middle school family, to make sure there's not confusion around what their assigned school would be next year. And so we're working on that both electronically and we're looking at stuffing envelopes as well. We're really confident in the electronic version right now, the stuffing of the envelopes, because it's around 2,000 envelopes. And so, a little bit of it.
Be a lot of stamps.
And we, right now, have about 30, between 30 and 40 requests to go from east to west, and about 15, 20 to go from west to east, which is about exactly what we would expect, because there's about twice as many families, kids impacted. And the majority of those are for incoming eighth graders. So, we still have time, you know, three weeks, four weeks to get those, but it's going pretty well. Initial feedback is just some questions, some people wondering about how we made that decision, and when we had a chance to talk to them, people, again, like we talked about throughout, really understood why. So it's been, I mean, it's gone fairly well so far. We'll see.
With all those pieces of information, our ways of informing people, are you including the information about, especially for eighth graders, to be able to stay in their current school?
Yeah.
So that's in there, and the deadlines and?
Yep, and that's been out there multiple times already as well. And our tech department, right now, is also working on, this is what we had talked about as well, there's some high-scene's work that has to be done in our student information system, which we're working closely with them as well, so.
Great, cool, thank you.
And we're also working with our liaisons to get the letter translated in Spanish, and Russian.
Great, good work.
So, I should know this, but do any of you have incoming six, seven, three, eight years?
My son will be in heat, but we're not changing, so.
But, it would be good, and we'll ask other people as well, but if you get it, and what you get, just as another quality check, it made sense to me as a parent. I understood my options, that would be always helpful for us.
Yeah, okay. Should be a response on that.
Bob?
Oh, I'm sorry, you caught me by surprise, I'm usually going, we're going to. Just three things real quick, our next advisory council meeting is next Tuesday at 6:00, so we need to hear the board, district office. We currently have 271 drivers that, students enrolled. We did create another session. We did create another session right before winter break, where we had twenty signups between December twenty second and today. Most students from, so accommodating the families, i.e. customer service by doing that. And then right now, today, we have fifty-six people who are pre-registered and signed up and paid to the running, walking program at the Hill House.
Great, that is good, that's very good.
Keith, do you have anything else?
What, just a settlement? And a payroll system?
Jellicoe? Dale? Ashley?
I have a couple. You've got a couple of handouts. One is research and best practices for success. Please read that before Saturday. And then you've got a news release that is ready to go out, I believe, tomorrow morning, tonight?
Tonight.
Tonight, so, which, a little more detail, kind of background, financial picture and some of those things pertaining to the teacher contract.
Item thirteen is recognition of visitors to our board. Is there anyone that would like to come in, too?
I would. I'll sign in if there's a thing to sign in. We'll get that for you.
I know most of you all, and I know what good people you all are and the good work that you all do for the district. But for the second time in the past twelve months, we've had a member of the school district post something on social media that makes this school district look terrible. And I listened to the oath of office today, and that suggests that you all will uphold the constitution. It suggests that you all will have good moral character for the school district. It suggests that you will protect our children, you will take care of our children. And posting things on social media that are partisan, that are nasty, that are potentially racist, if read correctly, is unbecoming of this board. Now, you all have free speech rights. I'm a professor at the law school at the U. And I understand the First Amendment. I teach the First Amendment. But your job is to protect the kids of this district. And imagine kids like me following you all on social media, and I follow many of you on social media, reading a post that was already deleted, although I have a screenshot of it, and wondering what is going on with our school board members. Now, if you read this post, as I may, as potentially racist, that's a violation of the equal protection clause of the Fourteenth Amendment of the United States Constitution, a constitution that you all just took and voted of office to uphold. Second, it does not show good moral character of this school district to have board members tweeting, especially about partisan things. This is a non-partisan board. There are not Democrats and Republicans. There are not blacks and whites. There are not conservatives and liberals. There is just a group of you all who are here to protect our kids. And I'm asking you, imploring you, as a new chair and as the superintendent of this district, and my wife and I have been on dozens of committees for this district. We care about these kids of this district as much as you all do. I'm imploring you to do the research that many city councils and several school districts across the United States have implemented and implement a social media policy. It may very well harm some of your free speech rights, but you all, like Colin Kaepernick in the NFL, or former NFL, or other NFL players, say your favorite player, not mine, Kirk Cousins, or my favorite player, Aaron Rodgers, are held to a higher standard. And in fact, they're just athletes. You all represent me and my wife and our kids and all the teachers and all the kids of this school district. Please begin this Saturday at your retreat, a discussion about a social media policy for you all. Get it implemented and please stick to it. It is unbecoming of this district to have those sorts of tweets, Facebook posts, Instagram, Snapchats, whatever they may be out there in public, because we all know who you are. You're not only public figures, but most importantly, you're public officials. You're our public officials. Please take this seriously and implement a policy to keep each other honest and keep each other's moral character on the interwebs to the highest standard possible. Thank you for your time.
Are there any other visitors that would like to be recognized at this time? Seeing none, we will move to item fourteen, which is our upcoming meetings and important dates. As we just talked about, our retreat on Saturday, the eleventh, is from eight to one. Just make sure that you make that change in your calendar. Next week is the MSBA Winter Leadership Conference downtown. So I encourage all of you to attend if you possibly have a tent in your schedules. Some great classes. Ashley, Mike and I, along with Baker Tilly, will be giving a presentation on Friday at nine. Was it nine fifteen or the fifteen? Nine fifteen, talking about our community survey and our work with Baker Tilly, so. If nothing else, come to that. So at least there will be people in the room that want to hear us. We even rehearsed tonight before the school board meeting, so we're good. And then we have our January twenty seventh business meeting at six. Is there anything else that we need to discuss before we entertain a motion to pause our meeting?
Good job in there, Christie.
It's a lot, it's a lot to take on, you know, you pick what a lot of things all at once.
All right. Item fifteen. I'll make a motion. Angela?
I'll say aye.
Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose.